Hi, everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order. It's our November 12th Planning Commission meeting. And we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance. So please join us.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice.
All right, welcome, everyone. Director Fu.
All right, real call. Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Feng?
Present.
Vice Chair Saxina?
Present.
Chair President Wong?
Present.
Oh, present, uh, sorry, Commissioner Takahashi is absent. Apologize.
No problem. All right. Has everyone had a chance to read through the minutes? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
All right, I'll second. All right, I'll take a vote. It's working, right? We have no controls here. Let's go old school. Any got paper, paper and hat? Let's see. We're having a technical difficulty with the voting. Let's do a voice, can we do a voice vote? Is that legal? Legal? Can we do a voice vote? All right, all in favor, raise your hands. Say aye. All opposed? Abstain? All right, cool. Motion carries three, zero, one. So, yeah, and if we have any help from the technical team, if you're watching on the AV, we'd like to, we are unable to do votes or control anything here from the dais. So, thank you. Okay.
I just want to, for the record, that's three votes, yes, for Commissioner Saxina, Commissioner Wong, and Commissioner Moore, and Commissioner Feng abstain.
That's correct. That's correct. Okay. From time to time, we make some changes to the agenda to make it easier for public participation as well as input. We are going to make some changes in the order here today. We're going to start with, I believe, item number four, is that correct? And then we're going to move to item number five, and then go proceed to two, three, and six. So, just so everybody knows that. So, we're going to be starting with item number four. Before we do that, though, we have this portion of the meeting reserved for oral communications. Things that aren't on the agenda, things that you want to talk about, you have the right to do so. There's a blue card, please pick it up. It's, you have three minutes to talk about pretty much anything you want, but hopefully it's relevant. So, do we have any cards at the moment? And since we don't have a manual timer that's working here at the moment, I will manually be timing and providing beeps, so just so you know. Wonderful. Excellent. All right, we've got four items here. Let's start with Genevieve Kolar. Please welcome, and I'll attempt to do the timing here.
Hi there, Commission. Thank you for your time. I also spoke to the city council, and they're very receptive and willing to work with us, but I thought this was an appropriate place to discuss Foothill Deans. So, my name is Genevieve Kolar. I represent Deans College students on the Foothill Deans Board of Trustees. And until a few months ago, I was a resident of Cupertino. I moved here so that I could continue my higher education. It was really the only option, because I was commuting for like two hours every single day with VTA and everything, which is really, I mean, a third of our students commute for two hours or more. So, it was not unusual. But I lived here for a little bit, and then my landlord decided to raise the rent and evicted us, and gave us a week and a half to find a new place to live, which was pretty difficult, but now I'm up in Sunnyvale, just across Homestead. But I'm here today to talk about, just to kind of bring to your attention, the fact that Foothill Deans students are a particular, or Deans students are a particular subset of the population and of the community that are really in need of housing options. So, Deans has faced declining enrollment over the past few years, and we did a recent survey, and we found out that 18% of our students had experienced homelessness over the course of a year. And I think about 53% of our students face housing insecurity, meaning they could not consistently afford their rent, or they're just, you know, moving around a lot, and not able to find a consistent, affordable place to live, which is really, really important when you're trying to complete your education. And that is entirely necessary for people who want to, who, many of whom grew up here and want to be able to afford to stay here after college. So, we'd really appreciate your consideration. There are thousands, thousands of students who are struggling to find affordable places to live, and they're parts, they're members of your community that, you know, we really should be looking out for. So, we invite your collaboration. We invite you to come visit Deans if you like, and meet students, and hear more about our needs. Just take us into consideration when you're, you know, doing planning for the city. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Feel free to send me an email if you guys do have a designated group that's actually connecting, and we can get back to you and have a conversation. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Since there is no beep or timer, Ian Greensides, please come on up.
Hi, my name's Ian Greensides, and I'm a business owner here on Cupertino, my office on Stevens Creek Boulevard. I'm here tonight to express deep concern about Commissioner Ray Wang's behavior and continued inappropriate behavior in the community. As you know, in the news, it was reported that he was previously convicted in San Mateo County, pled no contest, which is the same as guilty, for harassing someone who disagreed with him politically. He now falsely claims on the internet that dark money and real estate developers hacked into his system and framed him. Today, I received a letter from an attorney hired by Ray Wang, who's also a Republican political operative, threatening to sue me for defamation for bringing these issues to light. Mr. Wang, or Wong, I believe is pronounced, I apologize, wants to debate what the definition of revenge porn is, and signing someone up for porn websites to their email address. I don't have time for this, I don't have the patience for this, I don't have the patience for his bullying. He has bullied folks like Richard Mellinger, who spoke out against him, asking people to contact his employer. He makes false claims about people online, that if they support affordable housing, they're in the developer's pocket, they're being paid by the developer. Stephen Scharf has also made these types of false accusations. I'm asking that you call on your fellow commissioners to tell the truth, to be honest, to take responsibility for their actions, and I'm calling on all of you to call on Mr. Wong to resign. He's a disgrace to Cupertino.
Well, thank you for coming, Ian. Happy to have you here. All right. Next on our list, Jennifer Griffin, please come on up.
Hello, Planning Commission, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I wanted to talk about something that is sitting on our event horizon for January, and that is the apparent reappearance of SB 50 by Scott Weiner. As far as I'm concerned, the housing bills that have been signed by the governor, they were introduced in, by, in January because of the CASA compact, which has questionable origins and questionable membership. Those bills were put forward by the CASA compact, and they were introduced by our elected representatives in Sacramento, and they ultimately, though there was great public, people complained about them, the, I think it was the association of cities in California complained about them, many of them were still signed into law. We are living the repercussions of Scott Weiner's SB 35 now. I like to think of Cupertino as one of the 13 original colonies. We are fighting for our freedom in California. I am a sixth-generation Californian, and I am proud of my state, and I am proud of Cupertino. We need to do everything to fight SB 50 right now. HB 2001 has been voted into the same way in Oregon, and by law, you can put duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes on every residential lot in Oregon regardless of whether it's urban or rural. And we have to make sure that this type of thing does not happen to California unless we, the citizens, vote it in. We need to repeal SB 35 and the housing bills, and make sure that 50 does not present the limited view of unelected people that were put on the CASA compact. As far as I'm concerned, it is the CASA compact coup. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Lisa Warren. Just a reminder, there are cards there, you can pick them up, blue cards, you got three minutes to jump in. We have more? Okay, we do have more?
Hi.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi. So, just a couple things. Last week, I was at a meeting where a community college board member mentioned a hope that the community college district may be able to purchase any housing, or some housing, at the current Oakside Westport if and when housing is built there. And I haven't had a chance to talk to that board member and ask, where is this money going to come from, from the district, for you to be able to buy already-built housing? I'm a little concerned about that, but with all the swirling of everyone having housing wishes, limited land, and stakeholders not always including the common resident, I think it's important to be very careful about who's saying what to whom, and where in the mix this shell game ends up going. It could be a shell game in the end, and it's, so, I do need, I owe it to this person to say where you think this money's coming from, because a lot of the comments about not being able to save Flint, keep Flint, what they want to do is money-oriented, and there is no money. And there's a lot of people in the community that are no longer interested in passing bond measures, where they're paying more taxes in a way that they think is not being used properly. And that's not everyone, I'm just saying there are a number of people in that situation. Then earlier today, I attended a meeting related to what might take place and replace the Flint Center, and there was a great sharing of ideas from people from the college's students, residents. And what I found interesting, that there was, in that sharing of ideas, one person who spoke asked if the city of Cupertino, solely Cupertino, not any of the other participating students, student cities, could or would give land off-campus for the use of campus housing for either students and/or staff. And my first thought was, my god, they don't have any land to give, and if they did, they should be doing it for their own purposes. So, I know this is going to be coming in some fashion to the city, if it hasn't already, and I just am really, there's these tipping points where things are not looking well-thought-through, and I just wanted to mention it. Also, I wanted to...
Sorry.
That was your beep?
Yeah. You've got 15 seconds. So, go ahead.
Okay.
That was really lame, but...
So, this, um, this is quick, if it comes up. This was, is from the scene, the most recent Cupertino scene, talking about how beneficial trees are, and it actually has, I haven't used it yet to see, way to track trees on your own property. That being said, and the city recognizing publicly that the trees are very important, I want to have a further conversation about the current tree list for residential use, for privacy screening, there are issues with the tree list, and I can explain that some other time, but I just want to point out to everyone, the tree is, the city is outright saying how valuable trees are, and that should be commercial and residential.
Thanks a lot, Lisa. So, apologies to everyone for a second, we're going to take a technical break as we fix the timer and the items on the dais, so we're going to take a 10-minute break? Five-minute break, okay. We'll take a five-minute break, meet back here at 7:05. See you guys here for a second. All right, welcome back, everyone. We thank you to our Cupertino technical team, AV team, thank you. So, let's move on to item number four. So, for those following along, item number four is a public hearing item. Appeal the director's approval of a residential design review permit to allow the construction of 520-square-foot first-floor addition and an 820-square-foot second-story addition with a second-story setback, less than 15 feet, and a minor residential permit to allow balcony on the new second story. Recommended action: Conduct the public hearing, deny the appeal, and uphold the director's decision to approve the applications per the draft resolution. Planning Commission decision final unless appealed. Let's start with the staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Erica Poveta. I am associate planner with Community Development Department. So, today, we will be discussing appeal of residential design review permit R-2017-33 and minor residential permit RM-2017-39. The project consists of a residential design review permit to allow for a first-floor addition, as well as a new 820-square-foot second story. The minor residential permit is to allow for a second-story balcony. Just a little background as to the permits required. Typically, a two-story permit is sufficient for either a new second story or a second-story addition, when you have both interior sideyard setbacks at 15 feet minimum. However, the code does allow for a minimum combined second-story sideyard setback of 25 feet. If either interior sideyard setback is less than 15, then a residential design review is required, which also requires a peer review from an architectural consultant. For some context, to the project site, it is located in the Montevista Village Special Area at 21865 San Fernando Avenue. It's indicated in red in the image, and the two appellants are located on either side of the property at 21875 and 21861 San Fernando Avenue. On October 11th, 2017, Francis Kuhn of Atelier Designs, who was representing the homeowners, Mr. and Mrs. Tsai, applied for the residential design review permit and the minor residential permit. On November 11th, 2017, planning staff received a letter in opposition to the project, which was signed by 11 property owners, and this letter is included within the application, or the appeal packet. Following planning staff receiving this letter, the property owner met with the neighbors and revised the plans to address the neighbors' concerns. The summary of revisions is included in the staff report and also reflected in the approved plans. Between November of 2017 and May of this year, staff conducted multiple informal meetings with adjacent property owners, both onsite and in City Hall, to discuss the project. The required project comment period, which is mandated by code for the residential design review and minor residential permits, took place from May 1st through May 15th of this year, 2019. During the comment period, staff received multiple written comments, including a letter signed by 35 neighbors, which is also included in the appeal packet. On June 24th, 2019, the property owner and applicant submitted plans for a revised carport to address many of the concerns included during the comment period. June 25th, the project was approved, as it was found to be consistent with all aspects of the single-family residential ordinance, including the required findings that the project is consistent with the Cupertino general plan, the single-family residential R1 ordinance, and two-story design principles, that is harmonious with the general neighborhood, and that the project mitigates visual impacts. The approved, the approval of the design review permit and minor residential permit was approved, I'm sorry, appealed on July 10th, and we did receive one desk item today, which was a petition signed by, I believe, 57 property owners. So, the basis of the appeal can be organized into two main areas, the mass and bulk of the design and privacy impacts. So, the appellants argue that the existing home will have a very short front yard setback. The existing house was built when the property was in the county of Santa Clara's jurisdiction. Therefore, the existing front yard setback does not meet the current standards of 20 feet minimum. As shown from the image on the screen, many of the adjacent homes fall within this legal non-conforming status, especially in regards to the front yard setback. The existing front yard setback is approximately 13 feet, and due to the proposed development, a right-of-way dedication of five feet is required by the Public Works Department. This results in a front yard setback for the existing structure of a little bit less than eight feet. The city's municipal code recognizes structures, or portions of structures, that were legally constructed and retained with a development project, and can remain as legal non-conforming. Therefore, the applicant can retain the existing front yard setback and structure despite the non-conforming status. A second argument is that the proposed residence will destroy the harmony of the neighborhood as the expansion is significantly longer than the neighboring homes. Other than the front yard setback, all remaining portions of the project meet the setback requirements for the first floor, second floor, and second-story balcony, as well as all other building development regulations, including floor area ratio, lot coverage, and building height. There are no regulations regarding the length of the buildings or placement of the first or second story portions, just, other than the second story and first story setbacks. As indicated in the image on the screen, the rear yard setbacks do exceed what is the minimum required by the R1 ordinance. The minimum required first floor setback for the rear yard is 20 feet, whereas the proposed residence provides a 48-foot setback. The second-story addition also exceeds the second, sorry, the rear yard setback and provides an 80-foot setback to the rear. Furthermore, the appellants argue that the proposed residence will destroy, or, sorry, will not provide adequate screening, and will result in visual impacts to adjacent neighbors. The project does comply with the privacy screening requirements of the R1 ordinance by incorporating both existing screening plantings and proposing new screen, screening trees and shrubs along the property line. The project complies with all aspects of the R1 ordinance, including setbacks, floor area ratio, and building height. And as part of the residential design review, the project underwent an architectural peer review by the city's consulting architect for design and neighborhood compatibility. The consulting architect made recommendations to better incorporate the new second-story portion into the existing structure, which the applicant complied with by amending the proposed plans. Furthermore, as indicated in the summary of the project revisions and the timeline, the applicant has voluntarily revised the scope twice in order to address the concerns of adjacent property owners. These include reductions to total living area, relocating the second story, reducing the size of the second-story balcony, and decreasing the total building length. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission deny the appeal and uphold the director's decision to approve the two-story permit and approve the minor residential permit. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. It's opened us up to the planning commissioners for any kind of conversations, questions to staff, and then we will take public input, and then we will deliberate again. So, any questions from the commissioners?
Chair, just to clarify, after your questions and deliberation, then we'll open up for the appellant. I believe the appellant will have 10 minutes to speak.
Oh, yeah.
And the applicant will then have 10 minutes. After, after, if you have any questions, you can address to those two parties, and afterwards, you can open to the public.
Oh, correct, yes. Thank you.
For the privacy screening, what is the height of the trees which is required?
So, for the privacy screening, the proposed trees are Toyon and Max, or Max, I'm sorry, Wax Myrtle. The height of those will range from 10 to 25 feet. And then, as for the existing trees, those include carob and redwood, which are approximately 25 feet in height.
And the new trees, when they're planted, they will be at least 10 feet high, or?
So, for those two trees, they are required to be planted at six feet. They're actually shrubs. So, the planting height is required to be six feet, and just like the rest of our city-approved privacy screening trees, the intent is to provide partial screening within three years of planting.
Three years, okay. Thank you.
Actually, I have a question about that. Maybe I misinterpreted this from the plan, but it looked to me like there's actually a row of arbutus that was going to be planted there. That's a little different. The particular mention in the report was that there were, I think, eight-foot trees in 24-inch boxes. The only way I could tell that from the plan was, there was only one, one kind of tree that was specified in the planting guide that was in 24-inch box.
Could we pull up sheet L1 of the plan set, which has the trees that you're mentioning? And those would be strawberry tree, I believe?
Page 14 on the PDF, so...
Oh, sorry. It looks like it calls out 12 T-A screen trees typical, and TA, as Commissioner Feng has stated, is arbitus. What is this? Yeah, it's a strawberry tree.
It's a strawberry tree.
Yeah.
Okay, and we have also conditioned, as one of the conditions of approval, privacy screening trees and the privacy plan are to be approved and finalized prior to building permit issuance. So, if there are any confusion, or if there's any confusion or changes that need to be made to the privacy screening, that is already conditioned as part of the conditions of approval to be approved at building permit issuance. So, there's time to make some revisions to that.
Any other questions, commissioners? Yeah, I had one other. So, I did want to comment that I did, in the course of this, of this application, I've met twice with, with Mr. Wang, the applicant in this case, including visiting, visiting his home on Sunday. The only comment I had was, there was a accompanying document here, it was enclosure number five, the distribution of residences. I just wanted to comment that, I think there was some value. What it did was, it showed that there were a number of two-story homes in this neighborhood, as well as, you know, it kind of showed the distribution of one- and two-story homes. The, the way the map was created was, it kind of filled in the, the entire parcel for sites that had two-story homes. So, I actually generated this, an alternative, which, if it's okay, I could show. Let's see, upside down. So, the, what I did here was, I went back and pulled the, the parcel map from the GIS site, which was probably the site, the source of the other site. So, the, the house in question here is this one, and the dark blue houses are two-story homes, the light blue ones are one-story. And the dark blue houses are two-story homes, the light blue ones are one-story. I think the only thing that I wanted to point out here, and I think that maybe this is captured a little bit better in this image, the relationship of the size of the house, the green house is the existing footprint today, and the orange is the additional footprint of the extension. So, you know, I would just note that there are some other, there are some other homes. This one, for instance, occupies a similar portion of the parcel, but it's a little bit different for the homes in the, excuse me, for the homes in this area.
Commissioner Feng, which ones have balconies, from your memory here?
That, that's not something that you can get from the GIS, so I have no idea.
All right. We'll ask later. I'll take a look. Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners?
The balconies, you mentioned that they meet all the code requirements. Can you talk a bit more what the, the code requirements are on those?
Sure. So let me see if I have the screen. So the balcony does actually exceed the required setbacks for, for the rear, as well as the side. So as in terms of the side yard setbacks for the balcony, it's required to have fifteen feet, and the balcony exceeds that by providing almost nineteen feet. And in terms of the rear yard setback, the required minimum is twenty-five feet. However, the balcony provides sixty feet to the rear yard.
And there, are there any constraints on the size of the balcony in the code?
There's not.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, so the nineteen-foot setback is from the property line on the east side? That would be 21861 San Fernando Avenue?
Correct. And then on the other side, it is over seventeen feet for the side yard setback.
Okay. I just have a clarifying question about the daylight plane, which shows up on plan sheet CB. It's the front elevation, and they're showing a daylight plane, which looks like it is running into the existing roof line. So I'm wondering if that is currently not conforming, if you can explain that?
Sure. So that is the existing portion of the home that will not be touched. Our code does actually allow to, for homes to exceed the first-floor building envelope in cases where the wall plane is, does not exceed seventeen feet, and it's a gable end roof that encompasses an attic. So that is the case for this particular home. Additionally, in terms of the floor area ratio, that particular portion of the home is double-counted as floor area, so that it does, it is taken into account. But that part is not being touched as part of the, the expansion.
So is the, so you're saying it is conforming?
That portion does technically conform. The front yard setback does not conform.
Right. So that's the one portion about that?
Yes.
Okay. And you were saying that we are down around eight feet, and it should be twenty? Would that be twenty feet from the back of sidewalk, which would be the property line, or?
Twenty feet from the property line.
Okay. And in this case, is the property line within the sidewalk area, or where would that be?
So there will be a five-foot dedication from the existing front property line. You could say it's at the back of sidewalk, but based off the lot survey, that's what we, that's what we would use.
There's no sidewalk there currently, front sidewalk?
Right. Based off the proposed sidewalk.
Okay. So in the future, when there is a sidewalk, the property line will be sitting at the back of sidewalk, and then approximately eight feet to the, well, actually, it's less than it. Is that, is that eight feet to, you have kind of a, it has a bay window type shape, so I'm going to assume that's it?
It would be to the, to the building wall.
Okay. Okay. There's a heavy line, and then there's a dash line, so it's to the dash line that I'm looking at in the plan. Okay.
Just to clarify that, the sidewalk actually sits in the dedication, so the twenty feet would be from the street edge to the front of the house. Is that correct?
So in, in this case, it would not meet that
Well, yes.
standard.
Right.
But typically, it would be twenty feet from the property line.
The property line, normally. But we're in Montevista, which is grandfather's, correct?
Right. It would be considered legal nonconforming because they're not touching that.
So if it were, if it were twenty feet, then it would be, you would see fifteen feet between the sidewalk and the front of the house.
Correct.
Is that correct?
And just to confirm, there is nothing just changing on that wall?
Correct. There's nothing changing.
Okay. Thank you.
So I also did a site visit and looked at the neighbors on the west and the east side. There is a, a very small balcony on 21861. I would call it more of a landing at that area, and there's stairs up to it. Just wanted to point that out. And also, in the, in the map that Commissioner Feng shared, there is a shed in the house to the east of 21861, and that is a very low shed, maybe, maybe it's ten feet high at the peak, that's existing in that rear yard. So it gives the impression as though there's, there could be a large structure there, but it isn't.
Okay. That sounds like we commissioned exhausted their questions at the point. Let's bring the appellant up for ten minutes, and let's bring them up. I believe that the appellant is Jay, is that correct? Oh, wait, it's for the homeowner? Let's bring the homeowner up first.
It would be the appellant, the appellant.
Appellant, oh, okay. Yes. The appellant first, I believe, yeah. Excellent.
Any of them in combination?
Any, any combination. All right, you've got ten minutes. Floor is yours. State your name and your address, so.
21861 San Fernando Avenue. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to be here to appeal the commissioners about the construction of the balcony and carport. First, I'd like to play the video from my backyard. Yeah. Okay, it's a very short video, and it's looking at the
Feel free to play it again, actually.
We can play it again. Let me play it again.
Please play that again.
Yeah.
Stop it at the point, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Pause now.
Okay. Yeah. So this is from my backyard, so we could see the, the 21865 and the rest of the housings. So the, so that's just for the reference. How do we learn of the project? In September 2017? I was asked by my neighbor, Mr. Tsai, to sign a release, privacy protection measures, since the owner did not want to plant the trees. So that's why we learned the project. And, and on November 2017, four neighbors talked to the owner about our concern. We also updated the Erica about the neighbor's concern. We addressed three concerns to the owner. Yeah, this is the letter with the three points. The key point was to build a second-story expansion without a balcony, to stay in, in line with second-story house line of all the neighboring houses. This is the Google map. This is a Google map. So I put a little bit red line, like that's what the, as far as I understand, that's the, the second-story house line in this. And this is the project, the expansion project, and this is my house, and this is the neighbor's house.
So those lines, to be clear, those are, those are where second stories stop, end, okay?
And the, like this. This is the, the first story. You can see they all have first story, first story. And this is a storage area. This is a very old storage. And, and like, this is the, the 21875, the second, second-story house line. Yeah. And then, then eleven, at that time, eleven neighbors signed a petition letter to oppose such a long protruding expansion with a second-story balcony. Yeah, this is the, the letter, the petition letter. Then in 2000, in 2019 May, during the comment period, the final design came out, and then we look, we compared the, the one we have, the data we have, and then we find out, actually, the, 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 this is from the project data, just, just from this set. Yeah, this is the, we had the before and the final we got. And, and I think the change, the house actually increased, you can kind of see that increase, and first floor also increased, and the second-floor additions increased, and garage decreased. And the setback to the carport, it's just short by less than four feet. Yeah, although the second-story structure was moved to the front of the front part, but it's still not in line with the neighbor's second storage line. The twenty-feet-by-fourteen-feet balcony still makes the expansion protruding into the backyard. And this will be the, the, this, this one would be the, the future. This is the street, and this is where the driveway go inside. So this will be the addition, the expansion, and with the balcony in the back. So just like we see the video, the, everyone's backyard is open. So the balcony can actually look into everyone's backyard. So it, so this balcony still create privacy issue, and looking over all the neighbors' backyard, it block all the views from both sides. So at that time, this is May, so my neighbors signed the petition. So in ten days, we gather thirty-five signature to oppose such a long protruding design. Neighbors do not want the balcony to be built in the middle of the open backyard. This point is always the same, since the beginning of the project two years ago. We then appealed to planning commission. During the past two weeks, from October 29th to the November 10th, we have a, we have the fifty, we have fifty-seven signature that, that oppose such a balcony and possible that for the length, people wanted the carport to be short, too. A lot of neighbor doesn't want their, this to happen to their backyards, and worry that a balcony in the middle backyard to be built, possibly other neighbors or residents would expense similarly, and the neighborhood harmony would go down. Since this proposed project started about two years ago, it has been causing me anxiety about living next to this future long expansion. I used to enjoy doing maintenance of my backyard. Now, I go to the backyard only if I have to. I do not like to imagine that I'm standing in my backyard and feel being watched by people, either partying or just standing in the big balcony, or noise, or noise come from the balcony. I feel very depressed about it. In 1980, the previous owner of my property built an external stairway to access the second-story structure, which is the only way to access the second-story structure. My house is one of the shortest in the neighborhood, with a setback to the back fence about one-hundred-twenty feet. Therefore, it didn't block the neighbor's view in any way, and does not pose threat to neighbors. I have not received any complaints from neighbors since I moved in twelve years ago. I sincerely ask my neighbor, Mr. Tsai and Mrs. Tsai, not build a balcony in the middle of the yard and to shorten the length of the house by not having a carport. You already max out the building area for this fifty-by-two-hundred lot. Balcony and carport are bonus to you, but, but it's a nightmare for the neighbors. Without them, you do not lose in any living space. It will not give neighbors the feel of being watched by, by, by your second-story balcony, or noise from party from your balcony. We, we all work hard to be able to live in Cupertino, so please consider the fifty, fifty-seven neighbors and Cupertino residents petition. Thank you very much, Mr. Tsai. And thank you very much, commissioners, for giving me the chance to express.
All right. Just process question. Do we have time to ask the appellant, or do we bring in the applicant?
Yeah, I'm sure if you have questions, you can address the appellant this time, yeah.
Okay. Let's ask the appellant. Any questions on the commissioner's side?
Hi.
I'll also say that there's, I believe there's a second appellant as well, so if you'll to allow the second appellant to speak.
That's what they, yeah, let's get the second appellant up, so.
So we're moving on.
Let's get the second appellant as well. I think Eric and Cindy Fang, I believe, are the second appellant, so. Do we give them the same amount of time? Process question, ten? Okay, thanks.
This is San Fernando Avenue, the street that we live on.
Okay. All right. Good evening, planning commissioners. Thank you. I'm standing here on behalf of my parents, Eric and Cindy Fang. I'm their daughter, and I also live in the current house, 21875. I like to start off with a video, and my brother is describing just our house and the lot and neighborhood.
On, this is our house, and on the right side is neighbor's house. Most houses have a lot size of fifty-by-two-hundred feet. Their house is about five feet from our shared fence, and near that shared fence, they have three structures, as you can see, that block their windows and provide them privacy. This, the structure is quite tall and wide. We believe it looks very strange, and, but they built it for their privacy reasons. But at the same time, they want to extend their building far beyond the building line of the houses in our neighborhood, as we can see later in comparison. And with their extension, they want to build a carport as well as a balcony, and this balcony will be able to see into all the surrounding backyards, which we feel like really fringes on our privacy, because they want privacy, but they don't respect other people's privacy. As you can see, we don't, we didn't build a carport. We just left our building line right there. And the reason being so is that the backyard can be open space, and it can be a place of enjoyment, but they extended far beyond that line into their backyard, and so close, only five feet away from the, the shared fence, it just blocks the view, and it's not enjoyable, and we wouldn't want that for ourselves or the neighbors around us. We hope the planning commission will reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. So in follow-up, we, same as Mr. Jay, we also heard about this planning project, and we were asked to sign the privacy release form. And then we, we've always really respected their privacy. As soon as they moved in, they set up those fences, and we see them every day going in and out of the house, no complaints. So we were very surprised that he would ask us to sign the form to release our privacy protection measures. After looking at the design, my parents and two other neighbors also went to speak with Mr. Tsai's family about the three concerns that were addressed, is if they could build in the front part of their lot and not to have the balcony, and also to, to think about the neighbors around them. They left on pretty good terms, and we thought that he would, he listened. We also, at that time, had already had eleven families signing in opposition, and we emailed Erica the letter, just saying about our meeting and the concerns we expressed. However, later on, during the comment period, when the board came up in May, we realized that we realized that the long protrusion is still very much into the neighbor's backyard, blocking the view, and that there was still a second-story balcony, as well as the addition of a carport, which nearly reaches the end of the yard. So even though Mr. Tsai did do some changes, the primary concerns that we addressed So even though Mr. Tai did do some changes, the primary concerns that we addressed, which keeping the backyard open, just like the neighbors around us, and removing the balcony, we felt that those weren't addressed. We also emailed Erica again, letting her know these concerns. By this time, lots of neighbors came around, looking at the board, looking at our houses, and they just expressed lots of sympathy for us, saying how it really is not so considerate, that we would be affected most. And by this time, 35 families are willing to sign. So this, the dotted line shows where the carport ends. And this is our house, 21875. This is Mr. Jay's house. As you can see, by the time the carport is built, it really is very much into our backyards. And because of its height and its balcony, we wouldn't be able to see anything past it as long as just casting a big shadow and making it uncomfortable for the neighbors. We believe that this will really ruin the elegance of our neighborhood and the peacefulness, as well as devalue the property, as well as our physical, emotional well-being. And we just ask that Mr. Tai would not bring this kind of stress and worry on his neighbors as they enjoy their yard. Following is the balcony. You see, this would be the end of their house, and they would have the two-car garage with the balcony on top. This balcony is a great concern and menace for our neighbors because it creates privacy and safety issues. Standing on top of the balcony, which is very huge, it's 20-by-14 feet, they would be able to see into neighbors' yards, into their homes from all three directions. And because of the large space, there's a huge possibility of parties, which can lead to smoking or drinking or just noise. And so neighbors are requesting that the balcony not be built. And it's just a lot of threat to people, they feel threatened by it. So in conclusion, the living concerns are very important for all the neighborhood. With these new additions, the backyard is very much blocked. The additions are just too long and too tall and too menacing. Our hope is that everyone can live happily and comfortably, as well as safely, in our neighborhood. All neighbors, not just one owner. We know that these additions will affect everyone long-term because it's not like clothes or technology that we constantly can change. Once this is built, the next remodeling may be, you know, 50 years, quite a long time for now. So it's a long-term impact on us. In the last two weeks, nearly 60 residents have now signed the form, as shown by Mr. Jay. And we all hope that the city can reconsider not building the balcony and the carport. And as mentioned earlier, these two things are not included in their square footage so that their living area will not be affected. It's still 4,369, although everything else layout is the same. However, without the balcony and carport, it will positively impact everyone. So we sincerely ask not to bring privacy and security worries, anxiety, and threats to us, his neighbors. We desire that the community would be safe, unified, and strong. We value establishing positive relationships with our neighbors. And we just really thank all the neighbors for their support, their courage and passion to making Monavista neighborhood the best it can be. Let's continue to work together to build a brighter future together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, any questions for the appellant?
I have a question. In the video you showed, you had pretty high trees at the back end of your yard.
Yes.
Are they on your lot?
They're in my lot, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Just trespassing. No, you were not, we can tell from the video.
Because I've been there a long time.
I'm not sure who to ask this question of, but would you be able to show us the privacy screens that were in the side yard again?
Oh, sure, I have pictures of them, the fences.
Yeah.
The wooden lattice ones?
Yes, the lattices, I was wondering if those...
They look like this. Currently, there are three all along the fence.
Right.
They're very high and very wide.
So are those conforming with the building code?
Hi, I'll actually answer that. So those structures are illegal, and they are indicated on the plan set to be removed. And it is conditioned as part of the approval that they will be removed as accessory structure.
With the tree plantings that were replaced on the L1, correct? With the tree plantings for L1?
They will be replaced with privacy plantings. And as a point of clarification, the proposed privacy plantings do also include our Buddhist marina.
Okay, thank you. These screens are on the other side of the house from the driveway with the primary screen. I understand.
For the strawberry tree, is that, do you have a distance from the side property line that those need to be planted? You know, how many feet away?
We do not have a minimum distance per our code. Per the plans, I believe that they're only being planted a few feet away. Just a couple of feet away from the property line. But there's no minimum or maximum requirement for planting.
Would you happen to know what the full-growth canopy diameter would be for those trees?
Let me see, the maximum planting distance is 15 feet, so they are in line with that.
I mean, when they're mature, do you have a canopy that's, you know...
I can get back to you on that.
20 feet in diameter? Yes, I'm just wondering what the overhang would be. I do have a question for the other appellant.
Mr. Wong.
Yes, Mr. Wong. I was wondering if you could bring up the rendering that you had of the project?
Oh, okay.
No, no, it's just the drawing, the rendering of the final project.
Oh, the...
There was a... Yeah. Yes, okay. So I noticed that this is showing a lawn on the east side. And I believe your other neighbor has a photo which, or maybe it was in the video, but it... Is that lawn there?
This is on the project board, posted on, I took the picture from the board.
Right, right. But do you, isn't your property where it's showing as open green lawn?
No. This one, on this side?
Yes.
I had the house there, this is my house.
Right, right. Because I looked at this picture, and I see green lawn, but it's not like that. Okay, so it gives the impression as though it's wide open on the east side. However, your house is right there. I just wanted to clarify that part.
It's five, I think, less than five feet, about five feet to the fence. There's a fence, and my house is five foot. All the house are left aligned.
You have a five-foot side yard.
Five feet and wider on the right side.
Okay, okay. So you have a five-foot side yard, and then it's your house. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we bring the applicant, I just wanted to show the picture as is. So if we can actually look at it as I'm going to walk over to the opaque projector.
Thank you, Commissioner Wong, Chair Wong. I just want to point out, like, also on this map that Commissioner Fung has provided, that when you see the, you know, the dark-colored blue structures, it gives the impression as though the entire structure is two stories. But when we look at the neighboring house, we see that it's, you know, you're seeing a one-story structure from the front. Then there was a small cottage structure, which was two stories in the back. And when I look at this map from Commissioner Fung, we're... So it gives the false impression that the entire, all of the entire neighborhood houses, which are shown as two stories, are two-story from the front all the way to the back, when that really isn't the case. So I personally, I would rather had seen, you know, what portion of each of these structures is two-story, rather than having it look, you know, like the whole thing is at that height. And then it also doesn't take into consideration what kind of a roof line that you've got either, because it could be, you know, a steep-pitched roof or a very flat roof, and that makes a difference if it's gone to the maximum.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, let's bring the applicants up. Eric and Cindy Fang, please come up. Are they here?
Those are the appellants.
Oh, sorry. Those are the appellants, sorry about that. Francis, yeah, Francis Kuhn, sorry. Please come up. Sorry about that. You have 10 minutes as well, so we'll give you 10 minutes. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name is Francis Kuhn. First of all, honorable members of the planning commission, ladies and gentlemen, and community members of this neighborhood where my client, Mr. and Mrs. David Tai, calls home. My name is Francis Kuhn. In 2016, David and his family called me to go over the possibility of remodeling their home. He and his wife wanted to provide both of their young, growing families and elderly parents this patient environment to grow and be comfortable in. As a person who has an elderly parent, which I care for, she's 93, I understand David and Yuting's love for their elderly parents to be comfortable and cared for in their golden years. And what made their needs greater is that he and his wife also have five kids that David will present later on. And with these considerations in mind, we embark on a journey in developing a plan that includes converting an existing attached-two-car garage to a family room that then connects to the new second-floor addition, which would be a bedroom suite. And the existing first-floor master bedroom will then be... Will be where the elderly parents will reside in. So they don't have to go up and down a staircase. And as David has mentioned earlier, also his father has a medical eye condition, which would make it even more difficult to be independently on their own. That's what the need to care for is. And we also had worked with Erica and the planning staff to refine our plans based on city guidelines for two stories, and also in considerations for what we perceive as what we are giving considerations for privacies for our neighbors, with all those due considerations. And unfortunately, after all the hearings, we were surprised by the level and magnitude of the concerns of the neighbors, which granted hearing them today, it still bears on me that it seems to be it's a case of not in my backyard. We did our best, we accommodated, we did what we can. Unfortunately, it looks like their intent is not to have this project move forward and to deny my client the ability to care for and to develop their plans, their property. With that said, I would turn this over to Mr. Tai.
And yes, you still have seven minutes, just so you know.
Thank you. All right. Hi, planning commissioners, planning committee, and our neighbors. My name is David Tai, and this is my wife, Yuting. We want to thank you for taking the time to hear our case, our side of the story. We're grateful to have lived in Cupertino for more than 10 years. We have five children. But much more important than good grades, we want them to grow up as caring and respectful citizens, just like how our parents taught us to be. So in this project, we, in addition to following all the rules, we want to be courteous and considerate. My dad's health was the main trigger for our addition. He has been a pastor in Taiwan and US all his life. He survived an earlier heart attack miraculously. But three years ago, doctor informed us that his heart was deteriorating quickly. This was a clear call for us, it's our turn to take care of my parents. At the time, we thought my dad's time constraint and our budget would be the most challenging. Certainly not our neighbors, since they were sizable two-story homes all around us. And in fact, we are surrounded by two-story houses on all three sides. Out of courtesy, we did approach them, explain our motivation, and ask for their prayers. I assured them many times that we would follow all the city code and guidelines and listen to their concerns and make changes, so it's fair for everyone. We were completely shocked, actually, by the letter Mr. Wong submitted with the signatures he had already gathered. But in the following year and a half, we went above and beyond what's required by code to make accommodations for Mr. Wong and Mrs. Fang's preferences. They said they didn't mind the first-floor addition, but didn't want the second floor to be too far back. So we spent more money and time to move the second floor forward. Doing so actually means two of my kids had to move out of their rooms during the process. Erica thankfully even helped us check with the neighbors before we made this big design change, since it added a lot more cost and also distraction to the kids. They didn't like the large balcony with stairs, even though Mr. Wong has a balcony with stairs just four, five feet away from our fence. But we still went ahead and reduced the balcony, and also we removed the stairs. We also reduced the garage from three cars to two cars. And of course, we were already planning to replace all the trousers with the proper privacy screening. We also added a five-foot privacy wall, side wall on the balcony as well. So after all the accommodations and redesigns, Mr. Wong, Mrs. Fang, again submitted preferences and gathered signatures at the end of the feedback period. Once again, many of the preferences were confusing, contradicting. I understand all along, they simply didn't want us to add to our own single-story home at all. I don't want to belabor the point, but since they brought them up. To set the proper context, we're already living with much worse settings than they've described. Here is, oh, here's the thing we did. Here is actually Mr. and Mrs. Fang's house from our point of view. It's two stories with many windows facing us, parking in the back, all without any privacy screening. Here is Mr. Wong's house, two stories, again, balcony with stairs, even a barbecue grill, and it's just four, five feet from our fence, without, again, any privacy screening. Here are my kids literally playing under their balcony. But out of respect for our neighbors' rights, we made it work all these years. In fact, we're very grateful to have, to call this place our home in Cupertino. Despite their comments, we further made accommodations where we could, such as agreeing to remove a tree that we love, and also flatten the roof line of the carport and shrink the poles and whatnot. Finally, the city approved our project in June. But Mr. and Mrs. Wong, Mr. Wong and Mrs. Fang appealed approval, yet couldn't make the hearing. We waited four more months for them to, for hearing that they requested. Thankfully, my dad is still doing okay, more than three years into this long process. It really breaks my heart that I have to defend my rights from Mr. Wong and Mr. and Mrs. Fang. I don't wish my experience on anyone. What they said about me is not true, and I find that offending. More than a nice house and great schools, by far, what makes a good neighborhood is its people, right? We will continue to do our best to be good neighbors and teach our kids to do the same. I pray Mr. Wong and Mrs. Fang will be willing to do the same by starting to collaborate with us instead. To that end, may I propose, like, we can all pitch in for a seven-foot or eight-foot fence between us, since we have very narrow lots for more privacy. I also encourage them to add more privacy screening or any would be very helpful on their side of the fence. For example, the trees we have, both with our back neighbors and at the seven-foot fence here in our backyard, actually provide very good privacy for both of us. In summary, we've met and exceeded the code, as Erica had shown, set forth by Cupertino to protect the rights of all Cupertino property owners. Moreover, we've gone above and beyond multiple times to accommodate the preferences of our neighbors. I'm not sure what Mr. Wong and Mr. and Mrs. Fang had been telling our neighbors to gather these signatures, but if there's any misunderstanding to our intentions, please don't hesitate to come and talk to us directly. We treasure the chance to get to know you better as neighbors and as friends. Once again, thank you for your time, and have a peaceful... Once again, thank you for your time and have a peaceful and blessed holiday season. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Tsai. I'll start on questions, just really about interactions and privacy protection that you have. When's the last time you had a direct conversation with each other? Just wondering.
Aside from saying hi?
The usual take-out-your-garbage thing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But probably the Thanksgiving conversation that we had, 2017.
2017?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I was hoping actually at the time to meet Mr. and Mrs. Fang for the first time, since they're missionaries and my dad's a pastor. So I actually had fruit all cut up, waiting for them to come, but then they show up and unfortunately, all they wanted to talk about is the project, not their ministries. That's too bad. But I hope we get a chance to do that.
Okay. So, all right. Staff, has other privacy protections been suggested to folks, like frosted glass, any other kind of other options for the balcony? Have we considered any of those options?
They are providing a five-foot screening wall on, I believe, the east side, but as opposed, in addition to that, mainly just the privacy screening.
Okay. And the railings are glass, I assume, from what I could tell, right? Or am I wrong?
They, they are open, so if, if they were to have the privacy screening on all sides, then it would be considered floor area, so we'd needed to...
Is it only two sides or three sides?
It's on one side.
Oh, has to be more than one side is considered floor area?
If it's enclosed by three sides.
Enclosed by three, correct. So if they had them on the east and the west side, it'd be okay, but not on the north side, if that's correct? Or have them all backwards?
That, that would not...
No, that would be three sides, right? You have the existing building wall.
Oh, you're including the existing building wall now?
Absolutely. That's, I mean, the room has four sides, so there's an existing building wall.
Used to be two, that's why, I'm sorry.
Right, so that room itself has four sides.
It does, I understand that. It used to have, it used to be two sides, so I just wanted to double-check.
May we look at sheet A-5, the right-side elevation? Because the rendering shows there being styles on that side, which would not have privacy. It, this, this elevation looks to me like the west side of the balcony has the five-foot privacy wall and the east side would have a railing that was open in the architectural rendering.
My apologies, the west side has the wall.
So to go back to what Chair Wong was saying, is there something that can be done on the east side? Because it seemed to me that the west side would have, you know, had a de facto privacy wall because the roof line was there. Am I correct about that? Or is that just a standing wall? Let's look at the end. Yeah, right, right. You can see it in the rear elevation. You can see the roof pitch, so it basically has a de facto, you're calling it a privacy wall, but it's going to have to have a, a wall on that side, which will, you know, be a privacy wall. So it's not, that's not really an addition, that's the, that's the roof line that has to be there. And then it's all open on the, this would be the north side and the east side. Do I have my directions right? Yes, I do. Okay, so I'm wondering if there's something, it seems to me that the privacy issue with this, because if that's five feet tall, you're going to have to have some pretty tall people that are actually even going to be able to see over it. But on the east side, is there something that can be done along that railing?
Yeah, I want to apologize, I think it's the wrong terminology. What I was thinking was, east side, west side would have railings that are frosted, was that an option that was presented? Sorry.
That hasn't been presented by the applicant, but...
We're, we're open to that.
The west side wouldn't need it, because that's, if you look at the end, the rear elevation, that's, you've got a roof pitch on that side.
We do need one side to be open, though.
I understand that.
Right.
Frosted glass not counting as open?
Yeah, frosted glass railing, like you have like the rails and then frosted glass panels, that should not be considered a wall, at least from what I remember from before.
So just to clarify, you're saying that perhaps at three to five foot tall, instead of railings, you'll have glass, as opposed to full-high wall that's made of glass, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. Just want to know what options were out there, if that was an option or being considered.
That would be a great option to pick on from, but at the moment, we're preparing the plans, we were just going with what the minimum requirements are at the point. And it's open to modification, if such is required, to have that additional privacy.
Well, alternatively, you could have slats which are placed at an angle so that the view would only go, you know, to the, to the north, if it needs to be an open-type railing.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners?
Are we allowed to ask for this railing to be taller, you know, a forty-two-inch railing? Or is there a specific height that it needs to be at?
As long as it meets minimum height for building code.
Building code requirements of forty-two height is as low as can go, but we're willing to get it up higher if whatever is, whatever we can go to be not considered as an enclosed space for the day.
Right, right. Okay, and there, and I noticed in the plans, there was a mention, maybe it was in the resolution, of the window sills and the, and a five-foot number. Could you explain that?
Second-story windows with views into adjacent yards that have a window sill height above five feet are exempt from privacy plantings. That's what, that's in reference to.
That's generally bathroom window.
It's the bathroom ones that are kind of like in a height, yeah, like at five feet.
Correct. If it's above five feet in height, then they're exempt from privacy planting.
Regarding those windows, they're going to be frosted. On the second-floor bathroom windows, they're above five feet height and they will be frosted as well.
Or rain glass, it should be an option.
Yes.
Or architectural design rain glasses.
Yes.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Before we bring the public in? And once again, if you're in the public on this issue, please fill out a blue card. You have three minutes. I think we have a number here at the moment.
Thank you very much.
May I ask one more question?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay. It was a little bit difficult from the plans to tell where the building wall of the second story ended, how much further to the north that wall is compared to the existing garage area. So I was wondering, basically, how much farther north is that wall than the existing, you know, end of the building?
Okay. Well, I can point it out if we can have the site plan.
Everything is dimensioned from the back of the law.
It's dimensioned in there and in relation to the existing back wall of the garage, the second floor, here we go. Okay, so the, the crosshatch area, that, this area here, in relation to the garage, to the family room below, which was the garage conversion, it pretty much lines up, after all the adjustment, with that same wall line of the old garage that was downstairs. And then beyond that, that would be the, the new balcony. And underneath that balcony is the new two-car garage.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to public comment. Let's start with Lisa Warren, followed by Tai Chong Wong and Hitesh Merchant and Peggy Griffin.
Hello. So I, I need to disclose, I actually went to the site because I was asked by one of the appellants at the meeting two weeks ago. And so I obliged, and having recently been through something somewhat similar, not nearly as, well, not at the, I don't know, not as bad, I'll say, I completely understand his frustrations, and I didn't meet the other appellant at the time, but did, had permission to go into their yard. So I've been there and I had similar questions to Commissioner Moore's about the, the treatment of the railing, so I'm glad you're talking about that. As I said in oral communications, the tree, the privacy screening in this city needs a total revamp. Yes, there are not just twelve, but seventeen strawberry trees, arbutus marinas, on these plants. And to back up a little, what I heard from the appellants versus the applicant was wanting privacy screening, because from what I understood from the appellants, both of them were asked to sign a waiver of privacy screening. Yet, I heard something different from the applicant, that's just a side thing, it's a bit confusing. I can tell you the strawberry trees are absolutely positively a wrong thing to plant here. It would not suit either of these, any of these residents. They have a canopy up to forty feet, they're slow-growing, you're not going to get your privacy. A big problem with the city's tree stuff, privacy planning, there are no requirements from how far from a fence or property line these things need to be planted. You put a strawberry tree a foot away, which is what it looks like to me, and that's what happened to us, a foot away from the fence, that tree's going to, the branches, the trunk itself are going to go in, grow into the tree. I've been told there's not a huge root structure problem with plumbing and hardscape, et cetera. But these things are messy, they're virtually evergreen, but they drop stuff all the time, they're messy. This, what they drop is slippery. They're, they have no right being in a five-foot step-back, absolutely, in a five-foot space, you cannot plant these trees there and have them be successful. The branches will ruin gutters, break windows, unless you're trimming them all the time, which is a huge expense and it's not the same tree. And I have to say, magnolia trees are on the list, too, and they are equally bad. They drop stuff all year, even though they're evergreen, and they, they get too big.
Thanks a lot, Lisa.
So I would suggest that there be some regrouping with privacy planting so it can be successful, and I would ask, too, about frosting the windows in the master bedroom? Or, I don't know why five feet is the right amount, the right height for a window to be frosted, it should be lower to me than that, because privacy screening doesn't grow very fast.
Thank you, Lisa.
Ooh, I'm not done, can I say one more thing?
Go for it.
I'm really shocked that municipal code, R1 ordinances, allow for balconies, whether they have solid walls around them or open walls, to not be included in the square footage of a property. It's living space and it's more in-your-face living space, it's not just big windows, it's the entire thing. So, and to have a two-hundred-and-eighty-square-foot balcony seems excessive. So I hope that that gets revisited in the ordinances.
Can move you off, thanks. Tai Chong Wong?
Hi, my name's Tai Chong Wong and I'm the property owner of 21909 San Fernando, so a couple houses down from the property we're talking about. And my main concern is, I think in general, we welcome any home improvements or modification to raise up our property value in our neighborhood. On the other hand, if the balcony causing the privacy issue were causing our neighbors, when they try to resell, scare the future buyers away and could causing our resales problems and lower our property value, that's my main concern. And the balcony, I understand they need, they need a living space. The balcony, without balcony, would not sacrifice their living space. So as our, their neighbor, I'd rather they don't have balcony, so we don't have that privacy issue, okay? Otherwise, if, if you guys approve that, then we are talking about how to improve the privacy issue, okay? That's my only comment.
Okay, thank you very much for coming up. Hitesh Merchant?
Hi, my name is Hitesh Merchant and I'm neighbor of 21905, before that house. I did visit, go to Jay's backyard and saw the, how the balcony is going to protrude out and the size of the balcony, so that's the same concern. It's not going to be, you know, there could be a group of people, you know, party, noise pollution, you know, like, I hope smoking, but smoke, et cetera. So those are all concerns about having this kind of a big, open space outshutting into the backyard. I do hear about the, you know, suggestion of making some, you know, trees, but you know, you heard that it will be only certain feet and it will take three years to grow to the, the height, so it's just going to be, concern is about the balcony, not about the addition of the house structure and all that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Peggy Griffin, followed by Jennifer Griffin.
Planning commissioners, staff, I filled it out for item two, but I wanted to speak for this, so count it and I'll fill out another one. In our neighborhood, we have the same issue, there was a design review and the main issue was balcony and privacy. You really do need to revisit this. I think maybe like Lisa Warren suggested, maybe the size of the balcony should be part of the far. That would encourage people to have smaller balconies probably, because they want more rooms. But the three-wall thing doesn't make sense on a balcony if you're, you're going to have that back wall, you want some kind of privacy on the sides, no matter what it is, to satisfy. So I ask you to revisit balconies. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Griffin, followed by Peter Wong.
Hello, planning commission, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I'm going to just mention one word, story poles. A number of years ago, the city required story poles. That was probably, I think they got eliminated six years ago, I have no clue why. There was a home, I live in Rancho Rinconada where we're on 5,000 square feet. You know, you're, you have to really get to know your neighbors. We love our neighbors because we live so close. It's like we were in a massive condo complex of 1,500 homes in there. But anyway, one of, a street, let's see, across the street, let's see, it would be across, my neighbors across from me, across the street, and then the next street over, we're going to put in a very popular two-story design by a prominent builder who has been replicated all over the city, and it included a massive balcony along the back property. Well, in our neighborhood, you can see a balcony for everywhere. If you put up a balcony, neighbors 400 feet away can see the balcony and they, we have clear-story windows to the ceiling because we're in Eichler, we're not in pure Eichler, but we're in similar ones. And we had story poles, all of the neighbors. I would say ten sets of plans went out to all the neighbors. We had story poles that went up and they solved the problem. We saw where every part of the two-story roof was, where the balcony was, where the sides of the balcony was, and this is a balcony that you can look out all three ways, and it's a massive balcony. But that, but story poles let all the neighbors know what they were in for. So I think that it's important, in this case, I think story poles would have allowed everyone in the neighborhood to see what's happening, and I have no idea, and I believe that probably maybe even when some of the houses in Mont, I'm sorry, it's Monte Serena, Montevista were built, they were by story pole with, with some of the two stories. So why do we have story poles?
Thanks for sharing your Stern and Price house story. Peter? Oh, Peter was the video?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so he's already spoken. Oh, it's a video? Ah, he's a testimonial video, okay, please go ahead.
Oh, my name's Peter Wong, I'm the owner of 219...
You wanted to say something? Yeah, you can say, you can say.
Yeah, you can say, you can say.
We'll just rotate our head. Go ahead.
Unfortunately, it was recorded sideways.
Everyone rotate to, uh, counterclockwise.
You wanted to say where, where Peter lives?
Yeah, right. Peter lived here. Yeah, this is the, the project Peter lived here.
Speak into the mic, yes.
Right in the back, in the back of the, the Almudon Avenue, so you see in the back.
Yeah, just speak in the back. Uh, we can hear you. It's Almudon Avenue. Let's do the video, please.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, this, I just wanted to explain Peter live in this, this houses.
Okay.
Yeah, so close to the, uh, the, uh, the, the lots by 200, but they are immediate adjacent to it. Hello, my name's Peter Wong. I'm the owner of 21858 Almudon Avenue. With respect to the proposed remodeling, uh, we have a great concern with the second-floor large balcony. It's an impact on our privacy into our backyards, and we're concerned that it may be, uh, it may create a tremendous impact to the property value down the line. We would appreciate the commission's reconsideration. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I think that clears out our public commentary. Process-wise, any questions in general? Deliberation from the Planning Commission?
There, there was something mentioned, the, the privacy protection measures, I believe, in the residential ordinance. Could someone explain what those actually are?
So for any second-story window that's either new or modified with a window sill height less than five feet, goes back to that, um, then privacy protection screening is required. And it is also required for balconies, so second-story balconies.
And by screening here, we mean trees?
I'm sorry?
By screening, we mean trees?
Trees or shrubs? Yes, that are on our city-approved list, or recommended and approved by a certified arborist.
Thank you.
Um, magnolias not considered drought tolerant. Would that be correct? And I was just a little surprised to see it on the, on the list. Think of it more of a, kind of a southern tree where there's a lot of rain.
Yes, so I believe it's one of the things that we're looking to place in our programs, to update that, that tree, so we obviously haven't been able to get around to that.
Okay, and one other thing, looking at the strawberry tree, I've, I'm showing it at a height of 40 to 50 feet, and a width of 25 to 40 feet, so at its full growth, um, if the side yard is five feet away, this, um, will create a maintenance issue for the neighbor while you're trying to, um, provide privacy for them. And is there, given that this row of trees is shown extending, um, almost entirely to the north property line, I'm wondering if some of those trees could be removed if the neighbors agree to not have all of them? Because I'm concerned, when I stood in the backyard on the east property, I could see the, um, the Santa Cruz Mountains, I guess, um, pretty clearly from there, and it was a, it was a pretty nice view, and I'd be concerned about having these, um, final trees that are 40 to 50 feet high, where right now there, there aren't any, and you've got a nice, clear view. So is that something that can be negotiated away, and is that, is that difficult to do?
The privacy screening plantings can either be modified by the adjacent property owners. If it's anything that is a discrepancy with the code, they could either be waived by the adjacent property owners, or they can be replaced by any other tree on our approved list, or approved by a certified arborist that has a smaller spread, perhaps. And that is conditioned to be done prior to building permit issuance, so there is time to revise that.
A quick question as well. Say, I believe privacy protections also have a 30-degree cone of vision. Is that cone of vision also for all the applicant, for both the appellant and the applicant as well? As we're putting those in, or only for the applicant?
That 30-degree view shed is from the window jams of the new or modified-
Only from the new addition?
Correct. It would not apply to the existing homes if they're not modifying or increasing windows.
Got it.
I do want to mention that, um, the neighbor to the east with regards to, to their balcony, if it's, um, it appears that it is at the five-foot setback from the property line, um, whereas the new, um, balcony is, I believe you said, 19 feet from that property line. Is that correct? Do I have those measurements right?
To the east, I believe it's about 17 feet.
Okay, so you're saying from, from the balcony of the, the property that's having the remodel, and an addition, that it's 17 feet from that edge of that balcony to the east property line of that property? Right. Okay, and then if you're going from that same property line to the balcony, which is existing on the neighbor's house, um, 21861 San Fernando, it looks like it's five feet to that balcony. So we've got a 17-foot setback on one and a five on the other. Is that correct?
Right, from balcony to balcony.
Um, well, total, yeah, it would be 17 plus the five. But one is five feet away from the property line, and the other one will be 17 feet away.
I haven't confirmed the balcony on the other property line, but it looks to be around there.
Okay, because it's lining up with the, with the side of the building. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think I, I got a few comments here. You know, the first one is that one of the challenges, one of the challenges for the Planning Commission here is, you know, we are trying, we, we do this in a, you know, when we have an appeal like this, we are treating this in a kind of, uh, we, it's called a quasi-judicial mode, where we're going to look at this, the interpretation, whether the interpretation, uh, whether there's been an error in the interpretation of the approval. There are lots and lots and lots of rules about what you can and can't build. They apply uniformly to everybody in your neighborhood, uh, even though people may not have built out to that level. So one of the challenges here is that, you know, uh, you know, kind of as a point of order, our objective here is not going to be to, uh, to try to redesign the plan, or to try to find a compromise when you guys couldn't do it. I think that the, you know, the issue here is that, the issue here, and one that we actually see quite often, is that, that the application is compliant. Because it is compliant, I don't think that there's, for me, there's not a reason to vote, uh, vote against this. That said, um, I've raised this, you know, so I've seen this a, a number of times. We've had, in fact, I think this is probably the most common problem that we, we, when we are having, hearing appeals here, the most common cause for that is, uh, the addition of a second floor, and in particular, the addition of a balcony. So this is one of the things, I've actually brought this up on the last two, uh, on our last two work plan efforts, that the current policy that the city has, which treats balconies as not, uh, included in part of the calculation, it creates an incentive to, um, to put a balcony where, where, because it, because it's basically free space. I think that's an error in the way that our building code is, is written. It's not going to affect this, this application. So, so again, that said, uh, to the, uh, to the folks who are, who are building the house, who have the application of the house, uh, there's very, very strong sentiment in the, in the neighborhood that this is an issue. And I think in particular, the balcony strikes me as being a much greater issue than the expansion on the first floor. So I don't think, I don't think that we're empowered to tell you not to do it, but I would really, really think hard about whether you want to. There are, there's not been a lot of communication with the neighbors. I would encourage you to try to figure out a way, if it's, if it's possible, to try to talk with them. Consider not having balcony, consider doing it differently, consider a different planting plan. Something that, that, um, is more cooperative, uh, you know, with, with the people that you'll be living with, uh, living around you, and I think that things will work better. And we'll try on our part, we'll go and try to fix the problem where, you know, where the next application that we get doesn't have this balcony problem. So that, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Yeah, so-
Please go ahead, Commissioner Saxena.
I sort of echo what Commissioner Fang said. We do want to be consistent, and we do want to follow the letter of the law as exemplified by ordinance. My personal view is, uh, that, like, this whole business of if two sides are covered apart from the wall, it becomes, uh, like, enclosing space, maybe we could look at that. Maybe if we just have some, uh, privacy screening on the balcony itself, which goes up like seven, eight feet on the two sides where the, uh, people are the most affected, that probably would address some of the concerns which the neighbors have about their privacy. Because I think the sideways-looking yard, uh, part is the biggest concern. The one which goes into the backyard is probably a less of a concern. So I would say, uh, that's something we should consider, uh, because, uh, to me, that seems like a more common-sense solution, where we address the aspect of having a great, reduced visibility to the side while not, uh, running afoul of the issues of, like, that being counted as a, as a square footage. So that is something which, uh, and if, that's something which works for the appellant, we might even consider an exception to that, uh, and that's my view, that, uh, not counted as square footage, but have some enough privacy screening on the balcony, so this whole issue of people looking down into the side yard, uh, gets mitigated to a certain extent, is, uh, is what my thoughts are here.
Thanks, Commissioner Saxena. Commissioner Moore?
I also hope that there is some healing between the neighbors' relationships. I understand that when you are arguing your side, that these certain statements might get made that could hurt the feelings of the others, and I hope that that is resolved in a pleasant manner. Is the carport included in the square footage? I have a final question.
It does not count as floor area ratio.
Okay, so I also, I know we've been honing in on the balcony. I see the carport further extending into the rear yard as another issue, which, um, can cause some pain for the neighbors, because that's a, it's a structure, and while there's openings on, on three of the sides, and it's not being counted as the square footage, it's still adding another part of the, the building there. And I also agree that our, our balcony ordinance needs some work, and that that square footage should probably be counted in the square footage of the project. I'm not currently agreeing with the floor area ratio portion of that, though. And I also agree with the story poles. I think that that would help. And with this plan set, I wish it was a little bit easier to understand where the new addition, um, on the second floor was ending. I think that could have eased some confusion. And the tree plantings, we need to have a better list of trees, that is for sure. And we need to specify how far these trees are being planted from the property line, because if this, if these trees are planted, you know, three feet away, and they have a 45 to 50-foot, I mean, a 40-foot width, uh, this, you're, we are creating a problem for the neighbors, um, that they're gonna have to maintain. So, uh, you, you first have the, uh, the experience of losing the privacy with the balcony, and then the mitigation is a maintenance problem for the neighbor, and I think that's, it seems unfair. So I hope that these, these trees can be resolved with some other, um, way to mitigate privacy, and, and that there can be some agreement for when that row of trees stops, in case the neighbor, you know, wants to keep it open, so that they can still maintain the view of the hills in the backyard. Thank you.
So this, this issue is very hard for me, and, and I say, like, I've learned a lot over the last, I'd say, nine months, uh, in this role. Part of it is I, I am a free-market capitalist. I am a privacy and property rights advocate. But when you see 57 neighbors get together, um, and, and really talk about building harmony, and, uh, and really trying to build, um, a harmonious type of environment, and be conscientious with everyone, it really changes your point of view. Uh, and, and that's, that's the challenge, right? That's the challenge here. Uh, what I am a little bit concerned about is the fact that the level of communication among the 57 neighbors and the applicant, um, is not necessarily there. And, and I think that's something you guys will have to figure out on your own, uh, from, from that point of view. I am for, actually, in general, um, the ability to have those balconies, but with, um, people's, uh, ability to, um, have that conversation with their neighbors. And I think that's a very, very important part of it, as when you build something, because you do want to live with your neighbors, and once you move here, it's very hard to move out. Uh, and so that's, that's really the, the challenge here. It, it sounds like, and, and the challenge here is that the, the code as it's written, as the other commissioners have talked about, the code as written has us held to that standard. And so part of having freedom is the ability to be able to build what you want on your land in some degree. And I understand the issue of affecting property values, and, and I use this as example. I lived in Rancho Rinconada, uh, for some time, and, and there was great resistance to two-story homes coming into play. But it's the arrival of those two-story homes that actually enabled the property values to increase to the level where they are at the moment, because people saw the potential for rebuilding and being able to create, uh, a different type of environment. Now, for those who are in one-story homes, the question was, how did you balance the folks who were there previously with, uh, the folks that are arriving and, and building a new home? And, and that's the delicate balance that this Planning Commission is gonna be facing for quite some time, right? Really trying to find that. The challenge here really is, um, the letter of the law is written in the municipal code is as is. The best thing that we can do is request, and I say, we can kind of make legis, we can adjudicate from here. I don't think we don't have to do that. Uh, but we would strongly encourage, I think, in general, thinking about privacy options that will work, uh, because I think that is, that is the big issue. What I don't have is a sense here, is really among the 57 neighbors, that one day, maybe your kids or maybe somebody else would like to remodel and build something, or build, um, more units, or build more stories, or, or do something to expand their lots, how you guys want to handle that issue, right? Um, I am a property rights individual, so it would be great if somebody and everybody got together and could understand how they wanted to do it, and each neighborhood in this community is very, very different. I mean, people have very, very different expectations when they go into the neighborhood. And so to the extent we can get to a point where each community can come up with its own neighborhood types of standards, kind of like the neighborhood where Commissioner Moore lives with the Eichlers, where they have existing rules on, on modifications, it's gonna be important for the neighbors to get together to create those types of standards. Our challenge at this moment is that those standards don't exist, and because they don't exist, we have to go with what's in the municipal code. Uh, but what can be done by Mr. Tsai over there is the ability to make his neighbors happier about what that decision's going to do, uh, consider, uh, what would happen with reducing the extension of that, and think about privacy protection members that, that, that we can enforce. And I think that's, that's a very important part, so those, those are just my observations. Any other comments from the commission? Any comments from staff?
Yeah, uh, I would just want a second word, you just said about, uh, relying not just on the code, but also what the community wants, and having a conversation. Is it, with a smaller balcony, it doesn't go all the way out, outwork, can we have some other mitigations, uh, for the side yard views, which, what most people are concerned about? Because, uh, you're gonna be living with them for a long time, and why not keep their concerns also in mind? And see where can you probably make some concessions which addresses their topmost concerns?
And, and I'll just comment here that, uh, that, that there is definitely a challenge with standard, we, we recognize there's an issue. The, the problem we have today is that there isn't actually a ordinance that, that governs balconies. Balconies happen to be included as part of things like walkways and, and others. So that's something that, that's something where there's an opportunity to make, to make something different. But I, I would say also that, you know, an important part of what we're doing here is to try to make sure, you know, for each of the, for each of the owners, for everybody who, who's shown a- shown an interest here, you know, these rules do apply equally. And so hopefully, the takeaway will be, you know, if the day comes in the future, when you would like to make a modification in your home, that's within, that's within the zoning rights, that hopefully, you know, the first of all, that you'll, you'll have the fair opportunity to do that, and second of all, that you'll try, try to remember, you know, the concerns that you expressed, you know, at this time. I think that that may be something that's just gotten a little bit lost here. And, and I hope that, 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 you know, you try to be mindful of, you know, of your neighbors. Thanks.
I hate at this late moment to ask a question. However, I am looking at an outside kitchen that is on the patio. Is that expected to be covered as well? Oftentimes, those, those have an arbor or something over the top of them.
Residential architect Kun, do you know the answer to that? If whether the outside kitchen will have a trellis, or covered, or arbor?
I'm seeing a sink, and what looks like a cooktop, and perhaps a barbecue? On page L1.
Barbecue, barbecue.
Right, right. So sink, looks like a sink, and two burners, and a barbecue on the patio.
Oh, please come up. Thank you.
So the barbecue area is shown on the landscaping plan, which is part of the design concept presented by our landscaper, as a possibility, but it's not something that may happen.
And it's not covered, correct?
No, it's not covered.
And staff, is that approved?
It's basically a conceptual layout that our landscaper.
It's not approved as being covered.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we've exhausted questions, if that's true. Any other comments? Commissioner Moore, are you thinking?
I'm thinking. Is there, so with regards to the approval, is, are we at liberty to request a modification on the east side fence to make it, you know, say, forty, forty-eight inches, and with obscured glass, or solid panel of some sort?
You do have that capability, should you want to. It might not have always been done that way, but go ahead, Commissioner Feng.
You know, we should, we check with council, what is before us is a question of whether the application is submitted is compliant with the municipal code. If you want to make a recommendation, you can make a recommendation to them, and they can even decide to talk about it or agree about it, but that's not part of what we're voting on.
Okay, so we can make, then, recommendations that the trees along the east side be modified for something that's not going to cause a maintenance issue for the neighbors, that type of thing?
Not a discretionary approval, so you could say it, but I don't think that that, you know.
Counsel, let's, let's get official ruling here. I think we have different versions of how we can do this, but let's get the official version.
In order to deny the appeal, you do need to uphold the findings, which concern privacy issues. And so because the findings are before you, you could choose to make modifications to the conditions as drafted, in order to be able to support and make those findings. So it is within your purview, so long as the modifications are compliant with city code, to further condition the project to manage privacy concerns.
Counselor, for example, if we decided that we had a request for a certain height for privacy restrictions, or a certain, we wouldn't get to that specificity, because, but we could do that, should we want to.
Certainly, within the context of it being compliant with city code. So for instance, if we were looking at something that would fully enclose that balcony, we would then get into this question of.
Correct. That would be a far issue, which would then be past our square foot limits.
So we could do something like that, but other items may be within your purview.
For my understanding, what does the definition of an enclosed space mean? Like, if we have a side glass window, or like a pane, or like some structure, how high does it have to be to be counted as like an enclosed?
I believe it has to be sealed, is that correct?
So in order for something to be counted as floor area ratio, it needs to be substantially enclosed, which would be covered, so something that's covered and has enclosed by at least three walls.
So it has to be covered also?
Correct.
And in this case, is the balcony covered?
So if the balcony is not covered, then it's something that we could look into.
Like to request, like, more screening on the balcony itself?
Right. That could be something that we could look into and work with the property owner and applicant, in order to perhaps revise the balcony, to address privacy concerns, but also meet the code, in order to not trigger that floor area issue.
I will be supportive of that, if that makes sense to other commissioners and the applicant.
For the appellant's side, is there any concern about having the privacy measures? I mean, I'm curious just to see, have you guys had a discussion about privacy missions between the appellants and the applicants? Or is this the first time we've brought this up?
Sorry. Hold the mic, please, thank you.
Most communications have been by email?
Most, most communication happened between my client and their neighbors, and then it was relayed to me to make the prop, to make any adjustments with, if anything was negotiated with.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we're, to my understanding, we're not looking at wanting to require a roof enclosure, because really, what we want is something on the east side, you know, perhaps forty-eight inches and frosted glass. So I'm wondering if that's, you know, how are we going to do that, if that's something that we feel we agree upon? And then I'd also like to specify the distance of the trees would be from the property line.
I'd like to propose that way. We uphold the staff's decision with proper privacy measures that can be agreed upon, and compliant to the municipal code. Those property measures could include privacy screening with plants that do not impact or create a, those trees actually make a mess, so I'm just telling you right now, that do not actually, like, create property issues around fence or other kind of enclosures. And also look at potentially, what's the, it's about forty-two or forty-eight inches in terms of having some kind of either glass, or some kind of mesh, in a way that would actually provide, and provide protection and privacy for the neighbors on both sides, on both sides, not just one side.
There was also the suggestion of a seven-foot fence between the neighbors, and I know that if you, if you get an agreement with your neighbor, you're allowed to go to eight, you can go to eight feet, actually.
Eight feet. You can go to eight feet, if you want, on your fences as well, and that's something you should do, and it's the shared fence rule, it's a good neighbor fence.
If you're going to eight feet, you just need the fence approval form and a building permit, which will be applied for anyways.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, Counsel, please.
What I'm hearing you, desiring to go towards. So currently, in the conditions of approval, we have privacy plantings, which it says, "The final privacy planting plan shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Division prior to the issuance of building permits." And then it says, "The variety, size, and planting distance shall be consistent with the city's requirements." What I'm hearing is, we may, we may want to add a condition to this, saying that the current trees shown, that our Buddhists are not considered approved, and they need to think about something else.
Your challenge really is to keep to a forty-foot height without exceeding that, that doesn't block anyone's views, but to provide enough density without actually creating fence damage. That's really the issue, and a lot of fruit droppings, which is a pain in the butt.
So we want to leave staff and applicant some discretion to meet that?
Yes.
So we can make some language changes there. With respect to the balcony fence on the east side, you could prescribe a height requirement of, I believe the current fence is forty-eight inches?
You're forty-eight, right? Forty-two.
So you could bump it up to forty-eight inches, and require that it be some sort of either opaque frosted glass, or slating, as Commissioner Moore.
Slating or mesh.
Or something else to block visual impacts.
Doesn't have to be glass, and if you do glass, please make it bird-safe, I guess.
Frosted woodwork for that, right.
Not the whole time. Guilty.
So I'm thinking something in addition to that, to the item, something, something like privacy protection, that includes alternative plantings, and/or other balcony wall opaque materials, opaque materials on the east side, something similar to that, of a minimum, do you want to list a minimum height of?
Say forty-two inches.
Minimum, okay.
Let's do forty-two. Look, are you guys okay with this? I just want to make sure. I mean, if that's, I mean, we're legislating from the bench.
Yeah, and I don't know, I just, I think this is kind of a ridiculous situation here, because, you know, you can do what you think might be right for you, that doesn't mean either of these parties will agree with that. Certainly, without discussing it, it seems like it would be.
We need to have some discussion, yeah, but.
So.
I mean, we want to uphold with at least those kind of, at least have those conversations and enforcement in place. Is that something we can do from a?
I think that the language that.
Language perspective?
That was just put forward allows the flexibility to have further conversations with both the applicant and potentially the appellant.
And the appellant. I want to make sure they can have a conversation as well.
Yeah, that we're hearing here.
But that's not an obligation, it doesn't create an obligation, right?
It does, and that's an obligation.
I don't know, that's.
As written, it does.
As written, I think it does create some obligation, yes.
Okay. I mean, look, I mean, hey, if you want to add to it, I'll buy the first beverages you guys want for your housewarming. I mean, if you guys all get together as a neighborhood, I mean, I'm more than willing to provide that, because I do want you guys to all come together. I mean, that's, I'll commit a hundred dollars to that for fun, I mean, just, just to meet everybody, so you guys all get together and get to connect with each other, so.
Chair Wong.
That's not legislated.
I, okay, so you, Chair Wong, you mentioned forty-two inches, and was that for the railing height?
Railing height.
Okay, so I was interested in the forty-eight inches instead, because we are already at the forty-two inches.
Is it forty-two without railing? Is that what they have at the moment?
I think forty-two is the minimum, so.
The minimum. I don't want to break our CMC. I just want to make sure we're compliant.
Right, so I was interested in increasing it six inches higher. And then, and then give them the flexibility, if they want to have the slating, which seems to match what they have architecturally currently, or go with the frosted glass, have that flexibility.
Counselor, would we be breaking any CMC rules if we asked for more than the, than the requirements that are today?
If you find that they're necessary to protect the privacy of the neighbors, so you can make your findings.
I just want to make sure that's clear. Good, thank you. Okay, anyone want to put forward a motion to approve the staff's recommendation with the resolution that the council will read, so we don't mess it up?
Again, I just have concern here, because.
We'll save it for discussion, that's okay.
I mean, this is discussion, right?
Well, I'm putting a motion to play. I'm putting in a motion.
Yeah, well.
I'd like to put a motion to approve the staff's recommendation with the following requirements and resolution that the council will then read appropriately. Wait for her to read that.
Sure. So we're adding to condition ten.
Condition ten, yes.
Which says, currently says, "Privacy planting," and we'll change that to just say, "Privacy requirements." And we'll add a sentence at the end.
Can we get you closer to the mic, just in case?
Sure. That says, "Privacy protection shall include alternative plantings and/or other balcony wall materials, opaque materials on the east side of the property at a minimum of forty-eight inches."
Okay. Is there a second?
I wanted to adjust that. So we are saying opaque materials on the balcony, but we still wanted to have the option for the, for slats that could be at an angle?
Sure.
Which wouldn't be, that has openings, so.
Opague materials or?
Appropriate slating.
Appropriate slating.
Which provides privacy.
Appropriate privacy slating.
Let me, let me one second here. Privacy protection shall include alternative plantings and a balcony side of at least forty-eight inches comprised of materials that provide sufficient privacy screening.
A motion is in place, is there a second?
All right, may I hear that read again?
Privacy protection shall include alternative plantings and a balcony side of at least forty-eight inches comprised of materials that provide sufficient privacy screening.
I'm a little confused, I'm hearing privacy plantings?
Yeah, so that's the modification to the, to the trees.
Okay.
We're leaving that to, so it's not going to be what's on the plans, but we're letting that.
Okay, so modification to privacy plantings.
And.
Okay.
A balcony side of at least forty-eight inches.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
A motion is in play, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we can deliberate. Commissioner Feng, I think you have some objection to this, or a comment? That's okay.
The process?
No? Okay, feel free to register that. All right, we will vote, then. All in favor, we'll start the vote. Let me get the vote. The vote carries four zero, with Commissioner Takahashi absent and abstaining. And while it's not official, I am happy to provide the first hundred dollars to your housewarming party. I want you to invite your fifty-seven neighbors who signed this. You're not obligated to it, but I want you to actually connect. And so when you're done sometime in the next, given how slow everything is out here, the next two years, if I'm still here, I will provide that. So mark my words. Okay. We're going to take a break, I think we're going to need one, meet back here at nine o'clock, and we'll continue.